Hi Tracy.
Right now.
Yes.
It takes a few minutes, this is 100 and something pages.
Good morning. I'd like to call the Haywood County Board of Commissioners meeting to order.
Yes, it takes a little bit.
We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance and after that I'll ask Pastor Josh Fraser to come down and give the invocation.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the right of our own home in which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. God in heaven, we thank you for allowing us to have the privilege to be able to say that prayer, that pledge, excuse me, this morning. The fact that we do have liberty and justice, Lord, and we seek for that, we long for that. Lord, and I pray for these men who have a tough job oftentimes, Lord, to make decisions for our county. I know a lot of them personally, Lord, and I know that they have good intentions. And Lord, I pray that you give them wisdom and guidance, Lord, in each and everything that they do. Lord, I pray for the people of Haywood County. I pray that we would be able to be the people, Lord, that are people that would bring peace and love, especially during this season. We thank you for all the many blessings that you give to us, one of which being able just to live in this beautiful area. We pray that you give us guidance and wisdom in all that we do. In your name we pray.
Amen. At this time, I'll ask Judge Donna Forga to come up and administer the oath to Commissioner Inslee.
Do you state your name?
Lawrence Kevin Inslee.
Solemnly swear that you will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as Haywood County Commissioner, so help you God. Do you state your name? Solemnly and sincerely swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of this state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God.
I will.
Will you state your name?
Lawrence Kevin Inslee.
Swear that you will well and truly execute the duties of the Office of Haywood County Commissioner according to the best of your skill and ability, according to law, so help you God.
I will.
At this time, Donna Forga, or Judge Forga will administer the oath of office to Commissioner Rogers.
Do you state your name?
Brandon C. Rogers.
Solemnly swear that you will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as Haywood County Commissioner, so help you God.
I will.
Do you state your name?
Brandon C. Rogers.
Solemnly and sincerely swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God.
I will.
Do you state your name?
Brandon C. Rogers.
Swear that you will well and truly execute the duties of the Office of Haywood County Commissioner according to the best of your skill and ability, according to law, so help you God.
I will.
Thank you.
At this time, I'll open the nominations for Chair. Commissioner Rogers?
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Inslee.
Second?
Second.
Any other nominations? Opposed nominations? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations Chairman Inslee.
Thank you. Thank you, Brian. At this time, I'll entertain a motion for Vice Chair.
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Rogers for Vice Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
Anyone indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, Brian, Brandon.
Congratulations, Vice Chair.
Thanks Kirk. I just want to take just a minute and thank the voters that voted for Brandon and I into office this time and on this day, I want to also thank our veterans. Their, December 7th is the day that President Roosevelt said would live in infancy and I want to thank our veterans that have given us the chance to be able to be here this morning and govern ourselves. Also, I want to thank our staff and all of the hard work that they've done and I want to thank my wife Alice, she always keeps me straight. And when I'm got issues and everything, she kind of helps keep me level headed and I also want to appreciate my mom and dad being here this morning. They got up and came out on a really rough day to witness them being sworn in this morning. I always want to thank my dad, he always taught me how to work hard and my mom taught me the compassion and love of Christ and so I had the best parents in the world, I feel like. So I want to thank them for being here this morning and say that I appreciate them. Did you want to say anything, Brandon?
Yeah, I would echo what you just said. I'd like to thank all the voters that voted you and I in this time. I know we've got a lot of supporters out there on both sides of the fence, whether they got a D behind their name or an R or they're unaffiliated. Appreciate the confidence that you have in us and to do the job that we have. And to say what you said, to follow up with your family, that's kind of tough. I'd like to thank my wife, she's always done the same, keeps me straight. She was rushing me out the door this morning. Those of you that know me know that I run a few minutes late every now and then and my mom and my wife both were on me this morning, but I appreciate my mom, she's here this morning and had to get up as well on a cold morning and she's taught me a lot of things through my life and that's the reason I am who I am today and I'd like to thank her and my wife as well. So thank you guys for all the support, all the staff that's supported us and continues to support us in all that we do. We couldn't do what we do without our staff and it's important to have a good staff and we have one of the best staff in the world, so thank you guys.
Okay. Okay, our next order of business is to establish the 2021 holiday meeting, holiday and meeting schedule. So the regular meetings for the Board of Commissioners will be held on the first Monday of the month at 9:00 a.m. and the third Monday of the month at 5:30 p.m. in the historic courtroom of the historic courthouse here in Waynesville. And the holiday schedule will follow the state holiday schedule and I want to note the dates that the meetings will follow on a holiday and those meetings will be held on the Tuesday instead. And those holidays, of course, are Martin Luther King holiday and the Labor Day holiday. So when those two come up, we'll meet on the Tuesday instead at 9:00 a.m. or at 5:30. So and then also there'll be one meeting in this month of July because July, we usually don't have a lot of business, so we just have one meeting in July. So can I have a motion to approve the 2021 holiday and meeting schedule?
So move.
Second.
Okay. Is there any other discussion about that? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay. And then next, I just wanted to also, usually during our organizational meeting, we have, I usually make assignments to various boards and since Mark was elected to the state, I'm going to hold off until the new commissioner is seated for that and we'll just keep with our same boards until that time. And congratulations, Mark, on that.
Thank you.
And so I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rules for our organizational meeting related to the various boards and committees on which commissioners serve because of the seat soon to be vacated by Commissioner Pliss. So can I have a motion that we suspend our rules for that?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Did you have any discussion, Kirk? You look like you're questioning that.
What are we suspending the rules for?
Because in the organizational meeting, we will not be doing our board assignments that I usually assign board members to and I'll wait till the new commissioner is seated.
All right. It's not only an agenda, but we're, okay. That's fine.
Okay. Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, so now I entertain a motion that the boards and committee assignments for the upcoming year be presented to the Board of Commissioners at a meeting once the new commissioner is seated. Can I have that motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, our next order of business is our public comment session. We generally don't have a public comment session, but I felt like we should have one since we have a lot of public comment at this, during this time. So I have one person signed up, Bill. Bill Davis, so Bill, if you want to come on up. Welcome this morning. Appreciate you having you here this morning.
Well, I would like to say that I appreciate your group. Many of you I know a little more personally than others, but I respect what you do here. First of all, I would like to thank God that we, the people, still today at least, have the right to address grievances we have with decisions which appear to be in process of being made for us, which are violations of our God-given rights, which our founding documents, the Declaration of Independence and our Constitution guarantee. Many in our nation now seem willing to sacrifice any and all personal liberty to not die. How different from our founding fathers who pledged their lives, their fortunes, their sacred honor. How different from the millions of our ancestors, our family members, our friends, and even total strangers who fought and bled and died to establish our country and to defend it with their lives. And now we're supposed to yield our liberty to not die from a disease which has a 99.6% of the people who contract the disease survive. Our monthly death rate for the last 10 months in Haywood County is .00005, which is one half of one ten thousandth of one percent. And we're supposed to be in panic mode? Humans die. There is not, nor shall there ever be, a vaccine that can prevent death. This vaccine, which is to be rolled out, contains parts of murdered, pre-birth, male children. It is touted to be 90% effective. The current survival rate for those who get the disease is 99.6. I won't interfere with you if you choose to take the vaccine. I won't interfere with you if you choose to wear a mask. And I expect and demand the same respect if I refuse it. This is a graphic illustration done obviously not by an artist. If you inflate or enlarge the size of the COVID-19 virus to the size of a grain of sand, then the porosity of the N95 mask is represented by a chain link fence. How many of you can see the vision of the chain link fence? Nobody can see that? Can you see the dot that represents the virus molecule? Probably not. It's right there. That's the N95 mask. When people are tested positive, they're asked a question, how often do you wear your mask? All the time? None of the time? All the time is represented 80% of the time. None of the time is 3.9%. The only thing we can do to negate the effects of death in this life is to receive Jesus Christ as our personal Savior. Most of us will still experience death, but after that, eternity with God. 365 times, "Fear Not" is in the Bible. And probably 365 times a day, we hear fear. My God is the God of faith, not fear. Choose you this day whom you will serve. I choose to serve the God of faith.
Thank you, Bill. I don't have anyone else signed up to speak. Mike, would you like to speak? And I failed to mention, you do have three minutes and when you hear the tone, that means your time's up and if you would just finish your thoughts at that point, which Bill did. I appreciate that. Welcome, Mike.
All gentlemen, Mike Graham, I'm a resident of Bethel. Let's make no mistake, gentlemen, we are at war. We were invaded in mid-March and up until a few weeks ago, we were holding our own against the invading virus. We have been on the defensive this entire time, waiting for supplies to catch up with demand, be it gowns, masks, gloves, hand sanitizers, and most importantly, tests and testing supplies. We didn't have the capacity to deal with the volume of testing needed to be processed. In late June, we were starting to bring the turnaround times for the test results down to under 72 hours. But then the Fourth of July came and low and behold, a week later, the tragedy that yet silver bluffed became our worst nightmare. We anticipated demand for tests after the holiday, but unfortunately, we didn't ensure that we would be able to increase the capacity at the diagnostic lab to handle the volume. Now we have a new weapon coming online to bring the fight.
God, time just flies by.
Now we have a new weapon coming online to bring the fight to the enemy. It could be a game changer. Right now, we are waiting for the virus to come to us, making us reactive. Now with this new weapon, it is time for us to counterattack and start finding the infections early before they become contagious. This would be making us proactive. On Friday, the governor announced he was going to provide rapid tests for schools. I thought this was just a great, a great God send. I contacted a school board member and he didn't know anything about it. I contacted a member of the Haywood County Health Care Board. He didn't know anything about it, but said he would find out. He notified me later that Haywood County would not participate due to the accuracy of the test. I beg of you to reconsider this decision. I know it has not been discussed during any school board meetings and workshops, I'm one of the six people that watched them. I would like to know who the individual or group of individuals were that made sense a unilateral decision. Was there any debate or was it confirmation bias and group think? Please, I beg of you, let's reopen the discussion on this. There is flexibility in how we can use these tests. Let's at least have a civil back and forth about overcoming the obstacle, obstacles and look at pursuing the opportunities that these tests bring. We could have a plan ready to execute by the time school starts back in January. It is the best tool thus far to help us bring down hospitalizations. Now, to paraphrase a few lyrics from a most prophetic song from 1964, "The Sound of Silence." Hear my voice, that I might reach you. Take my arms, that I might teach you. Please, don't let my words echo in the wells of silence. For the words of the prophets will be written on our empty storefront walls and our empty schoolhouse halls. The entire song paints what we are going through today. Gentlemen, we are all in this storm together. Some of us have yachts, some of us have fishing boats, some of us are getting by with canoes, but some of us are just treading water. Unfortunately, many, many of us are being drowned. But you all are the captains of the cruise liner. It's time to start giving out life jackets. Are you going to continue to maintain the current course into the eye of the storm? Or will you seek for ways to steer us into calmer seas? Thank you. I would like to just give you guys, this is a report that came out in The Lancet on Saturday about the topic of rapid testing. Is anybody from the school board here?
You can hand that to Tracy. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for coming out this morning. Would anyone else like to address the board this morning? Okay, ma'am. Just come up and state your name.
My name is Jill Waskey. I just wanted to read a quote from Dr. Carey Mullis, Ph.D. He is the person who created the PCR test. Anyone can test positive for practically anything with a PCR test. If you run it long enough with PCR, if you do it well, you can find almost anything in anybody. It doesn't tell you that you're sick. So I think that's really important to consider. And also a few questions about the vaccine that all of us probably need to look into before we decide if we want this in our bodies or not. Will it work? Will it work? Is it perfectly safe? What is in it? Who is going to get it? And will it be mandatory? So I think everybody in this room should do some research and think about that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Would anyone else like to address the board this morning? Yeah, I'll close the public comment session. Does any commissioners have any comments?
No, I'd just like to congratulate you guys again for your winning the election and getting elected, and hopefully move forward together. That's four, five, four, and then five again.
All right, thanks. Thanks, Kirk. Okay, our next order of business is administrative agency reports and presentations and our public school central office renovation project update. We have Dr. Nolte and Associate Superintendent Dr. Trevor Putnam this morning. Welcome, Dr. Nolte.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know I probably shouldn't comment on public comments. We received an email Friday about 5:36 or 5:38 about the testing for schools. We discussed that this morning. Dr. Putnam, myself, and Jill Barker will discuss that with our board on Thursday at the work session and make a decision when we find out the particulars. We, as you all know, we've talked administratively back and forth, and we are looking forward to moving into the old Medical Arts Building, old NX2 building at some point in time. But COVID has done a number on construction costs. We bid the project two times, and it's really going to cost about a million more than we had originally anticipated to renovate that building. So we know you have some things under consideration. Our options are to spend down all of our capital reserve, which is held here at the county. That is there and could be spent. The hesitation and real concern on my part personally is, you know, what do we do if we have flooding and we need to start spending before we can be reimbursed by FEMA? Or if we have blizzard, heavy snow damage, and there's not enough there? If we spin it all down, there would be very little left. The other option obviously is to borrow some money to do that renovation. We've done two bids with alternates and everything. They're in the neighborhood of about 2.6 million. So we know we've discussed some things with you administratively, and we would just ask that you support us in either drawing down our capital funds or helping us borrow some funds to do that renovation.
I know Kirk and Brandon met with y'all, I guess, earlier last week. And Kirk, did you, did you guys have any comments?
Well, I mean, either one of those options, we kind of, we left it up to the school board as to which of those options that they want to choose. And Brandon and I, I think, believe that we would support either one of those as long as the school board did. I mean, we would work with them to overcome this. I know that they had some bids that came in a whole lot higher than they anticipated. And of course, people know that construction costs are up. We've made a commitment to give them the building, give them some money, and the money that they are utilizing will be their money. Or they'll be, or we will be able to assist them with a, with a loan, and then it'll be their money paying it back. So it's not the county providing any additional monies. And I think they need to do, the school board needs to, you know, make a decision on what they feel like is best for them.
Yeah, we, we plan to discuss that Thursday in our work session and then have a decision, hopefully by our board by late Monday night or Tuesday morning. We have a work session on Thursday and a, and a regularly scheduled board meeting on Monday.
Anything say, Brandon?
No, just to echo what Kirk said, you know, we'll leave that up to the board. I think we'll support either one. I don't know how the other commissioners feel, but I've always been a supporter of our school system and their needs. And I think Kirk and I both during our meeting expressed that, that we were willing to, to help you guys. We even asked the question, you know, do you guys, we always give you what you needed. So I feel like that we'll, we'll do whatever we have to, to support the system, the school system, and whatever decision they make, I'm good with it.
I noticed, Dr. Nolte, where you're moving into the old, previously mothballed elementary school. Is that going to suffice? That, that is going to work just fine. It's a school, and we really think it will need to be a school again. And so we did very little work on the facility. We did some painting, some cleaning, just to move in for, hopefully will be a few months and not longer than that. With some housing starts and construction in the greater Waynesville area, we think we will need that space for a school, and it will certainly be a lot more cost efficient to renovate that building than to buy a piece of property and build a new building that would house, you know, 250 to 300 students. So, you know, in the, in the school business, one of the ongoing jokes is, is you're flexible. You know, you get up and, and you really weren't expecting any weather, but we got up this, until they started talking about it a day or two ago. So we got up at 3:30 this morning and drove around. So you just, you just make yourself flexible, and you adjust. That's what you do. You know, the fire alarm goes off, the, the budget changes, you get a grant, you're flexible. That's what we do. We try to be as nimble on our feet as we can be to educate our children and support our staff people. So that building's going to be okay. In the short term, we hope.
Okay. Did you have anything more?
I'm glad you didn't ask too many technical questions because Dr. Putnam walked out to answer a COVID call. Those are on our dashboard, by the way. You want to see those numbers.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Nolte. I will say, I got a call this weekend, I guess, some parents are concerned, and of course, it's not our purview to, but she was saying that they would like to do Schedule B. So, on their, for their kids. She has an elementary age child who I think is probably, had been exposed to COVID, and so he's going to be out of school. But she, she wanted me to voice that, that she likes Schedule B, and I guess there's a Schedule A and a Schedule B. And she thought, she talked with her teachers and principal, and they, they were all hoping that y'all would do Schedule B in the future. So I know that's not our purview, but I just thought I'd let you know.
We surveyed thousands of people over about a two-week period, and the last data was to come in Friday. So we'll look at that and share that with our board on Thursday. I will say that moving from Plan A to Plan B for elementary is less face-to-face time, and we, those are the students that we're losing more often. Those who are not in front of us. Some, some students do great with remote-only learning. They have that personality and self-initiative and ability, but the ones we tend to lose are the ones that are in front of us less. But we'll share that data. Thursday night is going to be fun if you all want to tune in. We have several things to talk about, constructions and school improvement plans and COVID schedules, and it'll be a fun night.
Everybody's got their opinion, don't they?
That's right. Well, and we want to provide, you know, as many options as we can. People who want remote-only and people who want children in school, we just can't do the, the in-person instruction three or four ways. We'll have to pick one, and we'll share that survey data with the board, and they'll decide if they want to change or not.
Okay, all right. Well, that's great that you're kind of polling the, the parents to find out what, what they'd like to see, so that's good.
Yeah, if you're listening, it was on our website, but it did end Friday. You should have gotten an email about it if you're a parent, or a teacher, or a student. Dr. Nolte, I guess that your COVID dashboard, is that on your website as well? Yes, sir. How often is that updated? Daily. Dr. Putnam's probably doing that right now. If you've not seen the dashboard, it essentially has a number of columns on it. It has each school location. It has positives listed for the week, Sunday through Saturday. It has positives cumulatively, also by school. So you wipe out the weekly total every week, but they're added to the cumulative total. And then we have a column for clusters, which is five cases that are connected because of school. And we've not had any of those yet. Talked to Dr. Jaben, he said that's certainly possible, but we feel very good that, and I'm probably taking more time than I should, but I'll go ahead and do the advertisement while I'm here. We feel very good that we did summer childcare, all summer, without any transmissions at our elementary schools. We did our summer athletic workouts all summer long. We had one student come that was positive, but no one else was infected. We did a program called Jump Start, where students who were behind or needed extra help literally came into school. When others were remote, we did not have any transmissions. The only transmissions we are aware of, because of school, are two small employee groups, and that was several weeks ago. We had a small group of custodians at one school and a small group of cafeteria workers at another school. And that was a matter of, you know, probably being too many people too close when you were eating. But other than that, we feel like most of the precautions are working, and we just want to stay very, very vigilant in reminding people when they're in very, very large groups that they need to wear their mask, especially if they're inside six feet. And it seems to be working for us pretty well. Thank you for the commercial time there.
Yeah, that's no problem. Okay. Anybody have any other questions for Dr. Nolte or anything?
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we'll move to our regular agenda. And the first item of the regular agenda is to request approval to appropriate an amount from fund balance not to exceed $2 million from the sales tax designated for restricted public school projects. Brian, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is exactly what Dr. Nolte was talking about. We're taking $2 million that's designated for the school's capital needs out of fund balance to fund the renovations of NX2.
Somebody have any questions for Brian?
I don't, actually, mine's not working today, so I don't have the, is it, the attachment? But we're just, we're given the option. We're pulling, we're either pulling down or getting the loan. That's...
The next item on the agenda is, is that. It's a reimbursement resolution. So we can, we have the flexibility to either pay cash or to do installment financing.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll, I'll entertain a motion that we approve, item number one of the regular agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Who wants opposed? Okay, then, the second item of the regular agenda is to request approval of reimbursement resolution, which is a resolution declaring the intent of the Haywood County, North Carolina to reimburse itself for the capital expenditures incurred in connection and with construction of a school administrative, administration facility from the proceeds of certain obligations to be executed and delivered in the calendar year 2021. And we have our finance director, Julie Davis, here this morning. Welcome, Julie.
Good morning. This resolution is one you have seen before. There are a few little specifics that are in here that talks about a dollar amount I think we have in here on number, section one. It's got it not to exceed 2 million. But I would like to let you know that since we did the reimbursement resolution last year, we've had some discussions and with our bond attorneys and are concerned that there might have been some expenses that have already been incurred from the school system, and we want to be sure those are covered. So if you look at section number one that you have in there, I've made a change. And instead of saying that it's going to, it's going to reimburse expenses from this date forward, it says, "The county presently intends and reasonably expects to reimburse itself for the original expenditures incurred and paid by the county on or after the date occurring 60 days prior to the date of adoption of this resolution from a portion of the proceeds of the obligations." The rest of that remains the same. And if you'll come down to section three, "The finance officer of the county is hereby authorized, directed, and designated to act on behalf of the county in determining and itemizing all of the original expenditures incurred and paid by the county in connection with the project during the period commencing 60 days prior to the date of adoption of this resolution and ending on the date of execution and delivery of these obligations." We thought it might be a little bit better if we made that change to this resolution so that we could pick up some of the costs that they may have already incurred. I'll be glad to answer any questions, or I can talk more about it. I just read some of those sections that we changed.
Anybody have any questions for Julie?
Julie, I guess just a comment there. I know when we spoke last week, our sales tax, the revenue coming in is, again, higher than what we, what we anticipated, and we hope that continues, but that just supports us doing what we're doing here. And I don't know if you got any comment on that or not.
Yes, we do have very good sales tax, and if the sales tax continues to come in, we should have enough money probably to cover this expense, but we're not going to know that till well after June. We won't know the entire amount of sales tax until September of next year. So if we approve this resolution and then potentially get an installment loan, it, it kind of keeps our options open.
That's a good thing, is things are coming in higher. So that's...
They are.
Makes me feel a lot more comfortable about it. And the fund balance is still staying strong, I suppose.
This fund balance has stayed strong. Now, we have appropriated quite a bit this year, but we are still well above what the commissioners have cited that you wanted to maintain.
Thank you, Julie. I move to approve the resolution.
I'll second.
Okay. This is item two of the regular agenda. All those in favor, any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Who wants opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you, Julie.
Thank you. And can I do one other thing?
Yeah.
I have, I have someone here, our internal auditor, who is going to be the interim finance director and take off, over for me after I leave at the end of December. Her, her name is Christian Owen, and I wanted to introduce her to you, some of you that might not have met her yet. We're, we're thrilled that she's going to take over after I'm gone.
Okay. Well, if you've trained her, I don't know if she's been trained right. That's for sure.
Working on it. She's doing a great job already.
She's going to have some big shoes to fill.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Julie.
I'm not so sure that we approved Julie leaving, did we?
Yeah, that's right. Okay, so we've, is there any other business before the board today? Kind of got lost there, sorry. Okay, I'll entertain a motion that we adjourned then.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned, everybody, stay safe.
When do you, when do you go down?